All right. Seven o'clock, so I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, April 11, 2017, and we'll start with roll call.
Amy Seboth Wilson?
Here.
Catherine Westeby?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Don Francis?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
And Eileen Nichols?
Here. I guess I'd like to acknowledge everyone that's sitting in our audience this evening. Most of them, I believe, are from UWP. Seeing them nodding heads, okay. Welcome. This evening, we will have a special presentation. The first is to acknowledge Kim Lowery for 38 years of service to the City of Platteville.
This is getting to be a habit. We've had some really long-term employees retire from the City of Platteville in the last few, last two years. Kim couldn't be with us tonight, but playing the role of Kim will be Valerie Martin, and I hope that she's watching on TV. And this proclamation is in recognition of Kim's 38 years of outstanding service and dedication to the City of Platteville. Whereas Kim Lowery has faithfully served the City of Platteville since 1979, and whereas Kim has served in many different departments within the city over the years, including community development, finance, and city clerk, and whereas Kim has administered the partially self-funded health insurance and flexible benefit programs for employees and their dependents, whereas Kim has assisted with numerous local, state, and federal elections, whereas Kim has embodied the spirit of public service in faithfully, diligently, and honestly executing her duties, whereas Kim has faced significant personal challenges with a positive attitude that has served as an inspiration to us all, whereas Kim's sparkling wardrobe matched her sparkling personality, and whereas Kim's professional talents have contributed to making the Platteville community a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Karen M. Curt, City Manager of the City of Platteville, on behalf of the Common Council and city employees, both past and present, do hereby wish our sincere appreciation to Kim Lowery for her dedication and service to the City of Platteville. Thank you, Kim.
And the council extends her congratulations to Kim as well. She's a pleasure to work with. Next is the Platteville Chamber of Commerce Annual Tourism Report. Kathy Kopp.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Kopp, the Executive Director of the Platteville Regional Chamber, and I'm a little tardy getting in front of the City Council with a verbal report. We did, we are required to submit the annual tourism report by the end of February, which we did, but I was unable to make the previous council meeting, and I apologize to you for that, but thank you for allowing me to come tonight. I just want to give a quick overview. We did submit quite a large packet that had a tremendous amount of information in there, so hopefully everyone has had a chance to really go through that. Basically, the year 2016 was a really good year for the community. One of the benchmarks we always look at is the room tax that is generated, and in 2016, the total receipts, in other words, the hotel room sales, were, was over $629,000. So when we take out the exempt receipts, which are the receipts for those staying in the lodging properties that do not pay the tax, that was $54,000. So our net taxable receipts for the year of 2016 was almost $575,000. So there is a 5% room tax charge assessed to the room sales, and of that, 70% comes to the, to the Chamber as the official tourism entity, which we do have a contract with and have with the city consistently since it was implemented in 2005. The city retains 28% of that, and then the other 2% stays with the lodging properties to cover their expenses to, to take care of paperwork. So the, the net result to the city that I always like to, to acknowledge is that through our efforts, and I say ours, meaning us as the tourism entity, the community itself, and, and the city, we were able to generate over $33,000 for the city. The Chamber received $82,000, and the details in the expenditures and the efforts that we did is in that big report that we gave you. We operate one of eight Travel Wisconsin Wellcome Centers throughout the state of Wisconsin, and in 2016, we saw over 11,000 visitors. So we are definitely on track in increasing that number. In 2016, I know I've reported a number of years, the need for more highway signage, and so when the room tax was increased by 1%, it'd be two years ago now, we saved money up and didn't spend that additional 1% so that we were able to purchase the tourist information sign that is located on Highway 151 that signs Exit 18 both northbound and southbound. So we definitely saw an immediate increase in visitors, and the total cost of that sign was in excess of $10,000. And it's a one-time fee, so I think it was really a good investment for the community to have that sign, because if anything happens to it, the DOT will take care of it from now. So we were just responsible for the initial expense. So the overall piece of the, the health of tourism and the economic impact, I just want to cite one, one piece of the Department of Tourism's annual report that they put out. They go through a very extensive process to put those numbers together, and their process is approved by the Department of Revenue, so it's not somebody that's just pulling numbers out of the air. And the numbers that we have are always for the previous year. So the number that was in the packet reflects what the Department of Tourism acknowledged for impact for 2015. Now, the impact numbers for 2016 will be released the first part of May as part of National Tourism Week, so I will come back and make sure that you get the most current numbers. But in 2015, the direct visitor spending, and they do it by county, but I have it unofficially validated by the county because we have a majority of the lodging properties, the basically the hotel rooms, restaurants, and retail within the county that we can very conservatively accept. 50% of that total economic impact for our community. And in 2015, we saw 1.75 increase over the previous year, but what that number means in dollars is over $43 million of visitor spending in the county in one year. So a majority, I mean, a, a good portion of that is reflected back on Platteville. So that's all very, very positive. Another thing that, that was very exciting last year, on top of all of the other initiatives that we, we have with marketing the Platteville community to visitors, we created three new events. I'm very excited that, and tired, to announce that those three new events have now become annual events. So our Day on the Farm that will be held again June 17 at Digman Grain Farms, where it was last year, it's going to be an awesome event, and it is free to the public. It's all about showcasing our ag history and our ag tourism opportunities that visitors can come and see. So that event is taking place. And then our second Southwest Music Festival is going to be Saturday, July 29 in downtown Platteville. We have a full day of music, both in the city park and down, and downtown. And then on September 29, we are hosting our second Fall Harvest Table Dinner. A lot of people have been asking about that. Yes, it's coming back. So that, along with everything else that's going on, is promising to be a very, very busy summer. We're geared up. I'd also like to distribute our hot-off-the-press 2017 Platteville Community Guide, which is the piece that when visitors stop, visitor, visitors call and ask for Platteville information, this is what we send them. So I don't know if the council has any questions of me. I could stand here and talk for an hour, but I'm sure you don't want that. So all in all, I think that the tourism program is working well. We have an excellent relationship with the city, and I would like to acknowledge not only our, our Chamber's Tourism Council, who works very, very hard to keep the, the things in motion, but also the city departments that help make this stuff happen. It's, it's the Police Department, it's Public Works, it's the Fire Department, it's, they do an absolutely extraordinary job. They're there every time we ask them for help. So we wouldn't be as successful doing what we were doing without the relationship with the city and the city staff and department, so thank you. Has anybody got any specific questions?
One I asked before. One of eight centers, does the state give any money yearly?
No. We, we, I shouldn't say that. We get a, we have a, a marketing buy that they give us that's $3,100.
The first year or two, they gave $15,000, something like that.
No, they, we were, we got a grant. We, we do write grants. Sometimes we're successful, not always. The, when we first became a Travel Wisconsin Wellcome Center, we, because we were a public-private entity with them, we were entitled to a $15,000 grant to help us do some building upgrades. But after that, it's, we're on our own as far as other, outside of that $3,100 that they, they use to, they, they grant that to us as a Travel Wisconsin Wellcome Center to help with our signage. So the signs that, for example, that are on our building need to be replaced occasionally, those, those types of things is what that, what that money's for. But as far as the, it is definitely public-private because that's, the department promotes Platteville significantly because we are a welcome center, but between the Chamber and the tourism entity, we pick up the cost to run that welcome center. Okay? Anything else? Okay, I'm going to leave these with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. I could wait to do this at the end of the meeting, but I think I'm going to do this now. We had a, a little reception for a council member, Amy Seboth Wilson, who has served on the council and has decided that she just couldn't run a second term, mostly because of family. She has a young child, and this job takes quite a bit of time, and her job also takes quite a bit of time. So Amy, if you will come up to the microphone with me, I would like to read this proclamation. She doesn't really want to do this. She doesn't like to be in the public. Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Amy Seboth Wilson. Thank you for being a community leader and serving the Platteville Common Council from 2014 to 2017. Your commitment to public service, your donation of many volunteer hours, and your vision for our fine community is and will always be appreciated. And even though you're not going to be on the council after tonight, boards, commissions, and committees, you know, you'll be, you'll be contacted.
Am I on? Yeah. Thank you to everybody who elected me and supported me while I was here. It's been a really great experience, and I hope I've done a good job for our community. And I think Eileen was making a plug, and I'm going to plug it to all the college students here, that there's lots of seats on committees and other groups that you can join, even if you're a college student, this is still your community, and you can get involved. Thank you, everybody.
You have to wait there one minute.
Oh.
Tracy.
Hi, Tracy.
The Museums of Platteville want to thank you for serving on the board as a council rep, and we have a mug for you, and we thank you very much for all the good ideas you gave us and all the help at meetings and things, so thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. This is really special. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right, now we have the fun stuff done. We'll go on to our regular agenda, which is a public hearing for the CDBG grant, Former Pioneer Ford Redevelopment Project, and we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay. The city was fortunate enough to receive a community development block grant to assist with the Former Pioneer Ford Redevelopment Project. The grant was for up to $500,000, and specifically, it's to assist with property acquisition, environmental analysis, and environmental review, and site clearance. And as part of the CDBG grant, there's, well, there's lots of requirements actually with that kind of a grant, but one of them is, includes different steps we have to take for public participation. And we had a public hearing that was required way at the beginning when we applied for the grant. I don't know if you remember that. There's also a requirement for a public hearing during the middle of the process, or the middle of the project. And really, the, the feds are looking for two things to come out of this public hearing. One is to, for us to provide some information to the public on the CDBG grant and, or the program and how it works, and also to provide an opportunity for people to make comments about our specific project. So on a, kind of on a national level, the CDBG program was set up with three basic goals in mind. The first one is to provide decent housing. The second one is to provide suitable living environments, and the third one is to expand economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And to kind of help achieve those goals, they have national objectives, and when you apply for a grant, you have to specify what national objective you're going to meet with your project, and then that is part of the, they weigh that when they decide if you're going to get the grant or not. So those national objectives that they look at, the first one is to provide benefits to low and moderate income persons. The second one is to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blighted areas. And the third one is to provide funding for projects that have a particular urgency due to existing conditions which pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community. Basically, the last one is typically for natural disasters if the community needs money urgently. In our case, when we applied for the grant for our project, it was to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blighted areas, because that property, those buildings had been vacant for quite a while, and were concerned about them falling into a state of disrepair, which of course could have a negative impact on our community. So that's what we applied for. As I mentioned, that will use as grant funding. We already used some of it, or we acquired the properties, and now we'll proceed with the environmental analysis. We've done most of that, and we'll do the environmental remediation and site clearance later this year. So then the second part is to allow for public comment.
All right. So that was our staff presentation, which is also the applicant statement. Public statements in favor would be the next part of the public hearing. I don't have anyone who's registered to speak in favor. Public statements against, I do have one person who is registering against the Community Development Block Grant. Public statements in general, we have one request, Gary Prohaska.
Good evening. I know you've been following-
Gary, could you give your name, please?
Oh, Gary Prohaska. Live at 280 Division Street in Platteville, Wisconsin. I am a Preservation Commission member for the City of Platteville. I've got a packet that the Preservation Commission had just processed today, and it was at the advice of Chip Brown at the Historical Society, and his title is Senior Compliance Officer Lead at the State Historical Preservation Office. This letter was drafted and is going to be presented to Karen Kirk and Joe Carroll, and Joe Carroll's seen it. And then it's carbon copied to a number of people, and I wanted the public to be aware of it also. The title of it is Requesting Consultation on Newly Established Adverse Effects Concerning the Samuel Moore House backslash Gates Hotel in Platteville, Wisconsin. Under advisement by Chip Brown, Senior Compliance Officer, SHPO, the Platteville Preservation Commission is notifying you of the need to readdress Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Acts, Act, and the ACHP, that's the Advisory Council Historic Preservation Regulations at 36 CFR Part 800. This letter addresses the change in circumstances since the environmental review record backslash assessment completed on November 25, 2015, case number 15-1103-backslash-67, and the rest is just a reference number, XCET-199. Okay, the Gates Hotel previously thought ineligible, and this was due to, it says, prior City of Platteville 2005 building survey, has been determined eligible. And that was from the letter 2000, or 2017, the 4th of April, in clarification of the letter of determination. So in other words, it wasn't possibly, it is now determined eligible. And this was done by further research by the Platteville Historic Preservation Commission, and also the application of historic determination, application that was sent in, and that was provided by the Platteville Historic Preservation Commission also, and was reviewed on February 15, 2017 by the State Historical Society and Peggy Varigan, a National Register Coordinator. And attached is a letter of determination that they use stating the significance as an early hotel under the National Register of Historic Places Criteria A. And there's also another attachment, says also refer to attachment sequence. The second change in circumstances is that the property, the Samuel Moore House backslash Gates Hotel, may be adversely affected by this proposed federal undertaking. Under the developer agreement drafted between the City of Platteville and the Developer General Capital Development concerning the planned unit development, specific implementation plan, former Pioneer Ford site, the Samuel Moore House Gates Hotel has been slated for demolition for parking. Thus, the adverse effect to the property, proposed demolition, must be addressed by the Federal Agency, CDBG Authority backslash HUD, in consultation with other parties, including the SHPO, that's the State of Historic Preservation Office, local units of government, including the Platteville Preservation Commission, and of course, City Council Planning Commission, that isn't stated, there's City Council, but it's government entities, the public, et cetera. And right now, you see only two signatures. Ken Killian signed the original. This was a copy. Arlene Sis wasn't looking at attending today, but she did attend the Preservation Commission meeting. The other, Palmer Scannish, Tammy Black, and Charlotte Eversol, we haven't gotten their signature yet, but they did advise at the last week's preservation meeting to pursue this, pursue this matter. So anyway, I just wanted to bring into your attention that this, they're getting both an email, which was provided by Chip Brown, and this goes to the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, Jamie Locken, Lockenjir, she's the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation in Washington, DC. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, David Newco, he's a Field Environmental Officer in Minnesota and Wisconsin, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and he's in Minneapolis. The primary HUD agency preservation officer, Nancy E. Boone, she's the Federal Preservation Officer, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Environmental and Energy, Environmental Planning Division, and the H, the State Historic Preservation Officer, Chip Brown, and he's a Senior Compliance Officer. All the Preservation Commission members are also receiving the carbon copy. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that it's in the process, and that's just general information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else who's asked to do public comments, so we are on to council discussion. Any questions about the CDBG grant public hearing? Comments?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there action required, Joe?
No.
No, all right. This was for information. This was part of the grant requirement that we actually have a public hearing. So that concludes the public hearing. We'll go on to the consent, consideration, the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. In our packet, our council minutes from our March 28, 17, regular and special meetings, B, payment of bills, C, financial report for March, D is appointments to boards and commissions, and this evening, I have the following appointments. The Board of Appeals, ET zoning, Gary Munson. The Library Board, two, three-year terms, so two individuals, Betsy Ralph Tollison and Caitlin Rosemeyer. To the Plan Commission, William Kloster and Robert Pastor. And Police and Fire Commission, a reappointment of Mike DeLecky. Also in our packet, licenses, request one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. Temporary Class B retailers license for the Platteville Regional Chamber for the business after hours at the Mining and Rallo Jameson Museums on Tuesday, April 25. And the third is a temporary Class B retailers license for the Delta Sigma Phi for their Spring Bash Music Fest on April 29. F is a request for a street closing permit for Park Place from Irving Street to Market Street for the Farmer's Market, which will begin May 6 and through October 29 on Saturdays from 7:00 AM till noon. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss? Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, this is when we ask the public to make their comments. We do have one request this evening. It's Emily. What the Platteville Swing Dance Club, if you'll come up to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Pospical. I live in Roundtree Commons, 800 South Chestnut Street. I'm here on behalf of the Platteville Swing Dance Club. I am currently serve as a president. We are having our spring fling, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. It is an outdoor event, so as a courtesy to the City of Platteville, we are here informing them that we are going to have this dance outdoors, and we will have music. We are working with the university police to make sure that our music is respectful for the community and the others on campus. So we are just here to inform you, and if you guys would like to come, it's a free event. We're going to have dancing. It's on the west side of the Marquee Student Center on campus. All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other people who have asked to speak, it's about an action item that are, are an information item that we're having later, so I'll wait until then unless either one of you would want to speak now. All right. We'll go on to reports in our packet. Historic Preservation Commission, anything to add, Killian?
No addition.
Housing Authority Board, Killian?
No addition.
Plan Commission, we'll be talking about some of that this evening later. Library Board, Westeby?
I do want to add that it's National Public Library Week, so go check out the library. They have a lot of great events. Check out their Facebook page. There's a lot of restaurants this week that are donating or just supporting the library, so check out their Facebook page, stop in. Great staff over there.
Great. Other reports in our packet include the City Attorney Itemized Report, Water and Sewer Financial Report, both of those for March, Airport Financial Report for March, and also Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those reports? I would note that the Chief of Police did put in his report that the Police Department has a Facebook page up and running, so if you'd like to know what the Police Department is doing, check out the Facebook page. All right. Our first item this evening for action is 2017 city borrowing.
Yes, so I'd like to introduce Dawn Gunderson. Dawn is our financial advisor from Ellers, and she will kind of just go over the details for the proposed 2017 borrowing. and she will kind of just go over the details for the proposed two thousand seventeen borrowing.
I place before each of your seats this evening, a copy of a pre-sale report. The next, there are three agenda items on your council action this evening. One is the, and I left the agenda at my desk, or my chair, but one of them is the initial authorization to issue general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing your street projects. The bonds are issued in the state of Wisconsin by purpose, so there's also a resolution identifying and enumerating that purpose as street improvements. And then the third action is, because we're issuing bonds, there's a requirement that the clerk publish in the paper, the fact that the bonds are being issued and would be issued within the next month. So those are the three actions on your agenda, and they all pertain to this one particular issue. So what I've handed out is a pre-sale report, this is for street and protrument bonds, two thousand seventeen, they were identified in your capital plan that was adopted for two thousand seventeen. We've established a size of not to exceed one million eight-hundred-sixty-five thousand. Again, they're general obligation bonds, the ultimate pledge will be the tax base and levy support. The report kind of identifies the statutory provisions that allow you to issue these, this debt instrument. We talk a little bit about your borrowing capacity, this falls within your self-imposed borrowing capacity for general obligation debt. We've structured it at this point with a fifteen-year term. We had some discussion prior to this meeting as we're working through your long-term plan. We may extend that out a little longer, there was some discussion with the meetings we've had about financing projects for twenty years, so we're going to build that into the overall plan and maybe make some modifications before we actually take it out to sale. But the sizing, as we've, it doesn't change the amount of the borrowing, it just changed the duration and the term of the payment. We're scheduling that the first interest payment will be March of two thousand eighteen, so it does not affect anything in your two thousand and seventeen budget, which has been set, but it'll allow you to budget for the sale dollars needed for interest in two thousand eighteen. And then as we have it structured now, we have it running through two thousand and thirty-two, but we again may make some modifications to that duration of the issue. You currently have a bond rating with Standard and Poor's, AA minus, we will be scheduling a rating call with them, probably within at least a week before we would come back for sale. So the, your bond attorney is Quarles and Brady, and Standard and Poor's is your rating agency. As far as timing, if you authorize this initial set sale this evening, we will prepare an official statement, distribute that, we will engage that rating call with S and P, and we would be back on your meeting scheduled for May ninth, which would be the award of sale. We would take competitive bids that morning for the sale of the bonds, and then the interest rates would be set at that point in time. We'd be back with a resolution and those sales results on that evening. So the schedules that are attached with the numbers are, are the sizing, it's about one-point-eight million dollars of street projects, which includes some sewer improvements in conjunction with the streets. The issuance expenses, many of which are estimates at this time. One of the contingencies is the underwriter discount is bid, along with the sale interest rates, and some of the other fees we've estimated, so if there's any adjustments down there, we would reduce the amount of necessary to borrow. We also have a structuring on page seven of this document. As I mentioned, right now, we have that structured over a fifteen-year time period, we may adjust that. We've incorporated a tax impact rate on this, and this also reflects any assistance for any outstanding debt you currently have, and any, as we talked in our long-range planning, if there's any need to support any of the TIF-financed projects as well. Lastly, on page eight, just to give you an idea where interest rates have been, I know the last two times we undertook a bond or note issue, we were at some pretty historically low rates. So this is the last five years, the bond buyer indices. You can see that in, the high point in this five-year period was back in two thousand and thirteen, there's a dot up at the top. The low point was in July of sixteen, and that low point was actually probably a forty-to-fifty year low in interest rates, about the lowest that we've seen since they've been tracking it. So rates have unfortunately gone up since that time, but we still were about the average of where they've been over the last five years, so, and historically, this is still a good interest rate environment for borrowing funds. So again, we'll lock in those rates with the final sale on the ninth of May. I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have on this, this is the first step, the initial authorization for us to proceed with all the work that goes in prior to the sale.
Questions, anyone?
Who do you expect will buy the bond?
Well, as I said, they, the, it goes competitively, it is sent out to all the regional and national underwriters. I think Bock is, was Bock one of the investors in your, I mean, it will draw attention probably from a lot of the regional investors in Chicago, Minneapolis, even Bankers Bank out of Madison, who's the investment arm for local banks, usually would take interest in an issue the size, in your size of a community as well. So it's a low bid, basically, the cheapest for the city is the winner of the issue. So, but I would expect to see some regional interest and even some national interest. The rating helps because that sets the criteria and a benchmark for a lot of the investors.
Other questions or comments? All right, we have three separate resolutions here, so we would need motions on each of those individually.
I move adoption of Resolution Number seventeen oh seven, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one, is it one-point-eight-six-five million for street improvement projects?
Yep, one, one million eight-hundred-sixty-five thousand, yep.
One-point-eight-six-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second is a resolution to direct publication of notice to electors relating to the bond. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second is a resolution to direct publication of notice to electors relating to the bond. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Contract Two Seventeen for Ellen and Laura Street Reconstruction.
Yes, thank you. On March seventeenth, we opened bids for this contract for Ellen and Laura Street Reconstruction. There were three bidders, we have bid tabulation and recommendation enclosed, and a map with the project area. The low bidder is Rural Construction, they've been a successful contractor for us in the past. We had total base bid, city water and sewer of little over one-point-four million. We had eight alternate bids of those, staff is recommending three of them. Alternate A, which is approximately two-hundred feet of concrete at the bottom of Ellen Street. Alternate B, which is concrete on Laura Street from Virgin Avenue to Lily Street. And Alternate E is restoration along Business Highway one fifty-one to coordinate with some traffic signal repair work. The others, we, we do not recommend at this time for different reasons. So at this point, staff would recommend award to Rural Construction with alternates A, B, and E for a total contract price of little over one-point-five million, of which nine-hundred-fifty, almost nine-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand is the city portion of the contract.
Questions, anyone? There a motion to award the contract?
I move that we award Contract Two Seventeen, Ellen and Laura Street Reconstruction with alternates A, B, and E for the total contract price of one-thousand, one million five-hundred-twenty-one thousand one oh two.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is additional twenty-seventeen construction projects. Howard?
Yes. Because of the good bids that we received on both of our projects, the Elm Street project, which started today, and the Ellen-Laura Street project, which you just awarded, there are, there are monies that are not, that are left over from the budget. And what we've done is we've come up with two different options. Option A, we could use those additional funds to reconstruct Lutheran Street between Mineral and Furnace, reconstructing Furnace Street between Lutheran Street and where the work from Water Street happened back in two thousand twelve. We could also reconstruct the Third Street parking lot east of City Hall behind me here, and that could all be accomplished within the original GO borrowing that you authorized earlier. I have a map and show those areas on the map in red. If you wish to do everything in option A, plus reconstruct the Pine Street parking lot east of the post office, it would require additional borrowing beyond the approved one-point-seven million dollars. And on your map, that additional area is in green. So we, you can authorize additional projects, you can save the money for later, we're looking, we're saying that this would do additional aging infrastructure.
I would like to just add an additional comment. One of the new elements of information that we have has kind of been as we're working our long-term financial plan, and since Dawn was here, we actually had a meeting with her about that before the meeting tonight, and as we were doing some further analysis, we had based our one-point-seven million borrow on the concept of we didn't want to add more debt than what was dropping off. When we actually went back and kind of did the forensics in terms of what was dropping off, there was probably only about one-point-two million of that that was general fund, and the rest of it was coming from a TID. So even at the one-point-seven million, it will actually be adding more debt to the general fund download. Did I say that fairly well, Valerie?
To the levy-supported debt.
To the levy-supported. And so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Comments or questions?
Well, I will say that the, at least I have received, and I believe all the council has received the letter, relative to the Third Street parking lot east of City Hall, and the condition it's in, and the fact that it probably hasn't had any attention for, I don't know, twenty or twenty-five, maybe thirty years. So, and I, I don't have the breakdown, or maybe I do have the breakdown, of how much it would be just to do the Third Street parking lot, but I certainly with, I certainly would like to see that parking lot redone.
Other comments?
I asked about paid parking, and you made a comment at the last meeting about consideration of charging for paid parking, did I hear that correctly?
One of the recommendations that has come forward from the student team that's doing a downtown parking study, is that potentially in areas where we have overnight parking, that we consider charging for overnight parking.
Did they come up with any numbers yet, per night?
No.
Howard, you, you have an estimate on the cost for the Third Street?
Yes, our estimate is, it's in the spreadsheet in your packet, it's, we're estimating sixty-three five fifty.
Sixty-three thousand?
Yes.
And I talked to you about that yesterday, so it's going to be a complete do-over?
Full reconstruction, correct. It's not, it's not an overlay.
Be new curb and gutter, everything.
New pavement, the whole business.
And reformatting of the parking, parking, I would assume also.
That's going to be one of the elements that we're looking at, is whether or not we can redo it for better efficiency.
Well, I commented the last time that I am very much in favor of doing the Third Street parking lot, the one that's east of here. I think that that one really does need attention sooner rather than later, and so I would like to see the council decide to invest the money in that parking lot. The other one, while it needs attention, I think perhaps not this year. And as far as Lutheran Street and Furnace Street, Howard, I know that you've looked at the streets, and those are the ones that you feel would fit in the budget and do need attention.
Correct. There are many streets that, that need attention, but we think, like you said, this balances, you know, the budget available and, and the need.
When I look under option A, the second line, the work done in conjunction with Water Street, are you just referring to Water and Sewer extending into Lutheran? Is that what you're saying?
What I meant was, in two thousand twelve, when, when the state redid Water Street in conjunction, you know, with us, they went, they went back hundred fifty feet or so on Furnace Street, you know, with, with their reconstruction effort, and so our intent is that we wouldn't come all the way back to Water Street, we would just come to the point where they, where they stopped.
So if I understood this right, we approved one-point-four, three, four, all right, is that correct? For the Lily and the Laura Street projects?
For, for all of our, for all three of our projects, we're saying that the, that the city portion of those projects came up to a little bit more than one-point-four million dollars. And we had, we just did this borrowing for one-point-seven million net.
We authorized up to one-point-eight.
Authorized it.
But we also then just heard Karen and Valerie tell us that part of our goal was to not take on more debt than we were retiring, and on further, further review, we retired about one-point-two. So the one-point-four we've already authorized exceeds that by two-hundred thousand. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that the only So with that in mind, I would make a motion that the only project that we take off this list is the Third Street parking lot at sixty-three, whatever it is, sixty-three five fifty.
This isn't for action, is it?
Yeah, making a motion that we, we authorize that sixty-three thousand, sixty-three five fifty for the reconstruction of the Third Street parking lot. That was what it was. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second that we only add the Third Street parking lot, is that correct?
Well, that, that's the motion I made, but it doesn't mean somebody else can't try to add more.
Alright, so do we have a motion and a second to include only one additional project? That would be the Third Street parking lot.
I have a question.
Yes.
The Furnace Street, East Furnace?
Yes.
That's a part of Lutheran. What is the rating of each of those streets as far as need? You have a rating scale of one to ten?
Yes, I don't have that with me. The piece of Lutheran Street is extremely low based on its, based on its surface condition and also the underground utilities. There's four-inch water main, which is undersized for current standards. The Furnace Street is a little bit higher, it has a little bit better surface rating. But it also needs some additional underground utility work and, and things. So we looked at those in conjunction, working together so that they would make one complete project in one area rather than a half a block here and a block there type of a project.
What I'm wondering about too is whether you have any, whether you remember something about the main breaks? The potential for main breaks on those streets?
There's potential on, on any street that hasn't been done in quite a while. Fortunately, that, that short stretch of Lutheran Street has not had any recently that, that I recall. And I don't believe that stretch of Furnace has lately either.
Furnace was redone in about nineteen eighty-five, wasn't it?
I would have to look at the records to see what that stretch.
I know Furnace was done, I believe, from Chestnut to Water.
From?
Chestnut Street to Water.
Yes, this, this part out here from Chestnut to Water in two thousand ten.
The other part from Water to, to Lutheran wasn't done at the same time?
No, it was not.
And the cost, the cost of doing those two, refresh my short-term memory?
Okay. Our, our recommendation here is that to do Lutheran Street be a little over ninety thousand, to do Furnace Street about two hundred and forty thousand. So three hundred and thirty thousand, give or take, to do both of those streets.
Plus water, sewer, and utility obligations.
Correct. I, I was just talking about the, the GO obligations. If you want the grand total with the water and sewer utilities, that's over five hundred and fifty thousand.
But we're just considering the loan as far as the city portion?
Yesterday, the Water and Sewer Commission approved additional funding in order to complete all of option A, if that's what the council wants to do. The council needs to authorize the city portion of that work.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Because we do have a motion. So if there are any other comments?
Well, I don't know, I guess I would favor doing the whole thing.
Well, the motion is only for the parking lot.
The current motion is to do the parking lot. That doesn't mean somebody else can't make a subsequent.
Somebody else could make the motion to do something else, but right now we have that motion on the table, so. There aren't any more comments. We'll vote. Seabolt Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I, I move we do the remainder.
By the remainder, you mean the Lutheran Street and?
Lutheran and Furnace.
And Furnace.
And that would cause us to take on more debt.
That would cause us to take on more debt. Is there a second to the motion?
Sure, I'll second. And please clarify, the eight, the debt would be the ninety, the three hundred and thirty thousand or would be the five hundred and fifty thousand that we would borrow in this borrow? I'm, I'm unclear, the borrow that we just did, the GO, is that only for the city portion or does that include the water and sewer portion?
The one point seven million is just the GO portion. And, and based on my numbers and estimates for all of this, the, all of option A could be done within that one point seven million borrow.
Any other questions or comments?
These are estimates only.
Correct.
These aren't bid numbers. So again, just to clarify, the one point seven million borrow is what we authorized? But that was before we understood that we actually only have one point four million dollar borrowing capacity without taking on more debt than we had originally planned? Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
Correct. The CIP planned for one point seven million. That number was based on the total debt that was coming off. But when we went back and looked at it, that number was based in part on debt that was assigned to a TID district. So for the actual levy-supported debt, it was about one point two million.
And one thing Dawn just brought that we wanted to say, so when you, when you approved the prior resolutions for the one point eight six five, we had bumped that up because it's a not to exceed. So we had raised that with, you know, because we didn't want to, if you did approve Howard's request tonight, we wanted to make sure that we were under that, that we did not exceed the amount. So if it is a do not exceed, so if you decided not to do all the alternates, we still could borrow less money.
Right. So the amount will be dependent on what the council decides, decides this evening in terms of projects that are approved. But not to exceed the one million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand.
This is a lot of numbers.
I have a question, Howard. Is it absolutely necessary to do Furnace and Lutheran at this time? I mean, is there a great need or can we delay that for a year or two?
We've been delaying a lot of streets for a year or two or more. We would patch things as best we can if that's the council decision.
So I, I guess this was not, or these two streets were not part of our original twenty seventeen plan. Our twenty seventeen plan was of course less than, would be ideal if we wanted to keep our street maintenance level at forty-five year replacement or less. I think we're running at about?
Eighty.
Sixty?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Well, my question is similar to Tom. Do you know where this section of Furnace and Lutheran, where they sit as far as the capital budget in years to come? In other words, they're not up for next year, is that correct? You gonna put them off file yet?
They were not, they were not up for the near-term capital improvement plan. But as I, as I had mentioned earlier to Councilperson Nichols' question, this was the best fit in terms of the need plus, plus the budget available. There are a lot of other streets that are in as bad or worse condition, but I, we don't have enough money, enough additional money to do full blocks in, in those areas. So I had immediately discounted tho, you know, deleted those from consideration. So that, that's just part of the decision process is to try to match the streets with the most need versus the amount of money available. And this was about the best that we thought we could come, come to at this point.
So I'm not comfortable, and I still may not completely be understanding, but I'm not comfortable taking on more debt for these projects since they were added in because we thought we had access to funding and now we don't have as much access to funding as we thought we did. How would that be worded to say we should do these projects up to the amount? Change, basically changing that maximum spending limit?
There's a, isn't there, there's a, a motion on the floor, so if you. If you're not in favor, you would simply vote no, I think.
So basically, as it stands, we would be spending more money. This motion would allow us to spend more money than we have access to without taking in debt, right?
It would not be. You previously authorized a maximum borrowing amount.
Yes.
And so you've already approved three street projects. And so now the motion is whether or not you consider adding these additional two streets to the twenty seventeen project list.
But the money is in the borrow. You're saying?
Depending, you've authorized up to one point eight six five. But depending on what you tell us in this next motion, we will borrow less. We will borrow the amount based on what you have approved and we will know that based on the outcome of this agenda item.
But the motion on the table would allow us to borrow up to that maximum amount previously approved, as I understand.
It, it would, it would be authorizing borrowing more.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor and we'll vote. Seabolt Wilson?
No.
Westeby?
No.
Doss?
No.
Francis?
No.
Knoll?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Motion fails. Alright, good discussion. Next item, lead service line policy. Howard?
Okay. Based on the feedback from, from the last time, staff wanted to make, include those policy updates and reflect the guidance that, that the council gave last time. And so this is what we believe is the result of that, that guidance.
Any questions on the policy, lead service line principal forgiveness loan implementation policy?
Under item two, if more money is obtained in twenty eighteen, it says property owners with completed projects may receive additional reimbursements. Now I asked the question once before, what if somebody that doesn't have an application now applies? Are you going to fund those? Are you going to fund the ones that have put, got, done the work? That didn't get full payment, are you going to fund those full? And then what if some people in the future see, well, that's a good project, I think I want to sign up? So what is, what would be the policy?
Our intent is to eliminate as many lead service lines as possible. So the priority is to provide funding in accordance with our guidance to as many different properties as possible. If, if we get to a point where no additional properties come forward requesting reimbursement assistance or we get the additional grant monies from, from the state, once we've gotten to that point where, where we've done as many as, as are going to happen, then and only then would we go back to the others and, and do additional reimbursements. Our intent is always, you know, if we can only do two hundred and sixty now with the, with the money that we have available and we find that costs come in lower and we can do an additional ten or twenty, we want to do those additional ten or twenty before we give any of those first two hundred and sixty any additional money.
And the only caveat I would add to that is with that said, there's a timeframe in which you have to expend these funds and we don't want to leave any money on the table.
True.
Other questions?
I, I have a comment. I have to say that Howard and the staff, the Water and Sewer Commission that looked at this, did a lot of talking and I have to compliment Howard on the work that he's put in on this because he initiated the original grant request and was able to get it. And I, as long as we can eliminate as many lead service lines in the community, that's all the better. And we're hoping that as many people as possible will request that they get this service. It may not totally reimburse them at this time, but at least they'll be able to eliminate that. We have to think about the health and safety of all our, and all our citizens and especially the young children that may be growing up in these residents. So again, I want to compliment Howard.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
In the paper, there were comments about drinking fountains. Have you done any testing of drinking fountains as far as lead?
The city has not.
Because some, this is another city, some were found to be high in lead.
That was in schools.
That's, lead can be found in many different things and in many different ways. The most prevalent way is in a lead service line from the water main to the house or business or school or whatever it is. There, there is piping within the home, within the school, piping in fixtures to include drinking fountains and things like that that contained lead, depending on the age of, of that fixture. And so I'm not familiar with the particulars of all of this, but it does not surprise me if a older school building in a different community may have older fixtures like drinking fountains that have higher lead content than is currently allowed and has the capability of, of leaching lead into, into the water. When we do our testing, we do our testing in single-family homes that are known to have lead service lines so that we can try to test for the worst-case scenarios. And, and the city of Platteville is within federal and state guidelines.
But there are some that go over fifteen percent per billion.
That's correct.
And you're trying to get what, ninety percent of them less than fifteen?
That, that's the standard is, is that, yes.
Well, I'd suspect in, like as you say, in old fountains that we're exceeding the lead levels. Anyway, I was just curious whether we test those or not. Anyway, I was just curious whether we test those or not.
So this program is for residential properties, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I make a motion, we approve the lead service line policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We vote.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes our action items. The next items are information and discussion. And the first is a conditional use permit renewal for the city bar at ninety-five North Second. Joe?
Okay, city bar opened about a year ago and the bar itself was permitted use in the zoning ordinance, but the outside drinking, eating area under our ordinance required a conditional use permit, which was granted with several conditions. The primary one was that it be revisited in a year. At the time, it was approved, it was still kind of under construction. So that was part of it. And also, I think the council wanted to have the opportunity to reconsider it after a period of time to see if there were any issues that came up during that initial year that could be addressed. There, initially, there was a, a noise complaint that was received by the city, but I, I think there may have been some misunderstanding. The applicant had said that there may have been noise, but it didn't come from this property. And since that initial complaint, there had been no ongoing noise issues. The only other complaint that the city staff was made aware of was they have porta potties or portable toilets on the, the site that sat there during the, basically from spring to late fall. And due to the condition of that property, the location of that property, it's very visible. And so there was complaints about the appearance primarily, but the, the ability of the, the property owner to maintain those porta potties on the site. So the planning commission did consider this at their meeting. They recommended approval. They kind of took the approach that there were some issues that should be addressed, but they would rather see them addressed as an ordinance update. Section twenty-two oh six includes language that governs all outside eating and drinking areas. So they felt it would be better to address those in that ordinance rather than specifically for this property so that if there are any other businesses that wanna make the similar request, they're all covered. So we would be bringing that forward as a separate action request to the planning commission and to the council. So as I said, their recommendation was for approval with the understanding that some additional changes would be coming. Any questions?
Well, tonight I took a windshield survey of the property, so I may have missed the porta potties.
They have
Are they there?
No, they were removed late fall and they have not been put back up yet.
Okay, so they will be coming back?
Well, that would depend on the council's motion, I guess.
Okay. Well, my question is, why, why does he want to use porta potties? Can't he use the facilities within his building? He has no facilities in the building?
Uh, there are facilities in the building. I, I think a, a couple of reasons. One was just when they have, you know, a large crowd, it's a matter of convenience for the customers. They're already outside, that it's more convenient for them. There was also a concern about, I remember at the time, especially in the summer, obviously it's warm outside, people are coming and going through the doors constantly. The air conditioning might not be able to keep up, especially if you got a crowd inside. And then the door is always opening and closing. It's much better for the building owner to have the people that are outside stay outside. So I think those are kind of the, the two main issues.
My comment is that it seems like it's not a good image for Plattville to have porta potties.
And that was the reason for the complaints that we received.
The porta potties, you think of those, something's under construction, or this, we assume is done.
Right, so the, the, the planning commission, when they talked about it, they said, well, if, if you're gonna have them, there should be some screening requirements. There should be limits on the, the duration, how long they can be on the property, the maximum number. Staff, since that meeting, also talked about, you know, location, a certain distance from a neighboring building, for example. There were some issues raised about sanitation that, you know, the ability for people to wash their hands or use a sanitizer afterwards. And actually, the other item that came up was unrelated, but recycling facilities should also be provided. So as I mentioned, the, the planning commission just said, yeah, those are all important items, but they would rather address it as a code change rather than a part of this conditional use permit. So that, but they did wanna make sure that this project or property moving forward would be subject to whatever code changes are approved.
So the code change you're saying would be prevention, elimination of the porta potties?
Uh, that was not the approach the planning commission wanted to take.
They wanna, they want to allow them?
They wanted to allow them with, with restrictions.
I was on the planning commission when we discussed this and it was very, I don't wanna call it heated, but let's just say there was a lot of discussion on what the, what was under consideration as per the analysis of the conditional use permit. And that was that it was based on what was from last year and it should continue. But many of us had thought that there needed to be more for porta potties are considered portable. And they're not meant to be a fixture over a period of time. Was also concern about sanitation and the fact that, you know, porta potties, in most cases, if there's large crowds or whatever, you will have some type of sanitizers or some type of water for people to wash their hands. We have this in a number of places that you can go to. So being from the food industry previously is, there is a major concern when you have porta potties, food and liquor being served and they're constantly there, even though they may be cleaned. There is odor, there is the possibility that employees would use the porta potty and not be able to clean or sanitize their hands. And that is a great concern of mine. Maybe not to others, but it is to my, to me. I just don't see where the owner would want liability if somebody would become ill because of one of their employees. And that's, that's another consideration. So especially the downtown, small area like this, it does tend to give a, an image that I don't like to see, but my main concern is health and safety. I think that is very important. I think whether it's college kids or whether it's young adults or whether it's older adults, if you have sanitizer there or some type of means of cleaning your hands after using the facilities, I think that's important. I think it's probably more important than it was fifteen, twenty, or thirty years ago. So we have to take that in consideration. So, you know, I don't mind going with the conditional use permit as long as we have fairly stringent requirements that will need to be made, not only in this facility, but on all future facilities.
And that was the discussion that was at the planning commission, that, that this request for the staff to look at the ordinance that we currently have should apply to other facilities, not just this particular bar. So we do have two people who have asked, well, one person who has registered against this request for the conditional use permit renewal, Marilyn Gotchak, and then one person who has asked to speak and register against this request, Tracy Roberts?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Tracy Roberts. My husband and I live at one thirty-five East Furnace Street. So when the city bar opened last year, I mean, I can see the bar, I can hear everything from that bar as can dozens and dozens of other families that live in the neighborhood. This bar has been incredibly disruptive to my life. I called the police several times, not just once. I don't know why we only have reported once. I would've called a lot more times if I hadn't been so tired. But being kept awake from, you know, eleven, twelve, one, two o'clock in the morning because people are shouting, screaming, fighting and yelling at a bar because they're outside, they use their outside voices. They don't seem to think that they need to control the volume of their speaking, shouting, yelling, and brawling. It's super annoying to be woken up night after night. When the city bar first opened, they were only open three nights a week. So we tried to make adjustments. Then now they're open seven nights a week. The porta potties are disgusting. They add one more tawdry thing to my neighborhood. I'm a homeowner. I own a property. I make beautiful gardens for people to look at. We grow food and give it to people because we're generous and we love our community. But why should I have to put up with this noise? It's horrible. Why do we allow an outdoor area where people are just shouting and screaming, right in a neighborhood? I just talked to a friend of mine who lives in Jenner Tower. He did not wanna speak tonight. He said that he asked the building manager, the woman who works there most days, what do you do when people ask about city bar noise, the additional noise that's come to our neighborhood since last year? And he said that she told all the people who've complained, just turn on your air conditioners and close all your windows, all summer long. I don't think that's the answer here. I really don't. I think we made a bad decision here. It's impacted my family. It's impacting dozens of other families. We have complained. I wrote a letter to the editor as well last year, which you may have read. This has been a real problem. I'd love to stay in Plattville and I'd love to stay in my home. I don't wanna be driven out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is for information discussion. Any other comments from the council? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go on to resolution authorizing execution of the DNR Principal For Given Financial Assistant Agreement for the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, Howard. Anything you wanna add or?
No, this is just an authorizing resolution for the paperwork that we're ongoing for our lead service line program.
Okay. Next is the contract for weed and grass mowing?
Yes. This one is our standard annual contract for enforcement of our weed and grass, tall, tall grass ordinance. And so it's, it's up for, up for action next time.
Good. Any questions, anyone? Sidewalk repair contract.
Uh, our annual sidewalk repair contract, we had reduced funding this year due to the budget. Our total right now is slightly over the budgeted amount of ten thousand dollars, but I believe that we can absorb savings in other capital project items such as equipment purchases and things like that to, to cover that small overage.
That will also be up for action next time?
We used to put in forty thousand a year. How are we doing as far as sidewalks, as far as condition?
Well, I, I wish we had enough money to, to do the additional repair amounts, but I also understand the financial condition of the city and that was the discussion during budget time. Like I say, if we had more resources, we would be able to do more repairs.
What about people tripping and falling and injuring themselves? Do we have any claims against the city?
I'm not aware of any claims that would be for the insurance people or, or the attorney.
Other questions or comments? All right. Last item before our work session is twenty seventeen city goals quarterly report.
And this was just put in for informational purposes for the council. Quarterly, we try and report back in terms of the goals that the council had set at the beginning of the year. I would just note that we added a new section called operational goals to highlight a few items that weren't in the original, the original goals, but that are taking considerable staff time and will be improvements to our service. One is, of course, the MS for storm water regulations. The other is converting to a voiceover IP phone system. And then our move to managed investment services. And then we also, under capital projects, added the outdoor fitness center. While that is not a city project per se, it's being led and fundraising is going on by a private group of citizens. It will be an added amenity to the trail and there will be coordination that the city will do with respect to that project.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the report?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
My question here relates to the downtown parking task force. It says there's gonna be a final report end of April. Is that gonna be presented to the council or there'll be a session someplace?
The students are going to be wrapping up their study at the end of April and that will be presented to the task force. We don't have a date yet for that presentation. I can notify the council. The council's welcome to attend that. With respect to the task force recommendations, that will actually take, that will extend beyond the end of April.
So the student report will be held where? Sometimes they're held here.
Uh, we've had it in the G A R room.
G A R?
Other questions or comments?
So we could be, we could sit in on that?
Absolutely. We will also have the PowerPoint as well.
All right, that concludes our information discussion portion and we will go off camera for our work session. Senior Senator Task Force Progress Report. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay for the work session if you'd like, but otherwise, thank you.